Call meeting back to order. Betsy Calhoun, please.
Yes, I know that all board members are in attendance this evening.
Okay, thank you. First item of business, 4.1 is approve the agenda for tonight. Everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda and the motion to approve the agendas. What goes in your board packet? Oh, my bad, I missed it. Second, who said second? Brandon, okay. Brandon, second. Okay.
Your motion, then, I'm sorry. Is it great?
Great.
Okay, thank you.
It's close.
I started trying to react to me.
Betsy Calhoun, please.
Carter.
Yes.
Pop. Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Norley.
Yes.
Musis.
Yes. Okay. We have two items coming out of closed session tonight. We will vote on it individually. First of all, as a result of the October 25, 2013 incident, Glenwood High School administrative panel is recommending to the Ball Chan Board of Education that student A be expelled from Glenwood High School for two calendar years, remainder of 2013, 14, and 2014, 15. Administrative panel also recommends student A be referred to the Sangamon County Safe School program. If enrolled, student A must display appropriate attendance, grades, and discipline at Sangamon County Safe School in order to remain enrolled. If student A fails in any of those areas, the expulsion will immediately be implemented. I need a motion to approve that expulsion. That stated? Thank you, Brandon. And second, please? Thank you, Lisa. And Calhoun, please.
Pop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Wurley.
Recues.
Carter.
Yes.
And Musis.
Yes. And second item, as a result of the October 25, 2013 incident, the Glenwood High School school administrative panel recommending to the Ball Chan Board of Education that student B be expelled from Glenwood High School for two calendar years, remainder of 2013, 14, and 2014, 15. The administrative panel also recommends that student B be referred to the Sangamon County Safe School program. If enrolled, student B must display appropriate attendance, grades, and discipline at Sangamon County Safe School in order to remain enrolled. If student B fails in any of these areas, the expulsion will immediately be implemented. Also, student B has the option of applying back to Glenwood, back to Ball Chan schools to re-enroll for the 2014-15 school year. That is a decision that will be made in conjunction with state schools and the Ball Chan administration. Need a motion to approve that expulsion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Linda. And second, please? I'll second it. Thank you. Calhoun, please.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Wurley.
Recues.
Carter.
Yes.
And Pop?
Yes.
Musis.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Is that just B? No. Oh, Susan. Oh, Susan. Okay. You want us to wait, please?
No, I'm just getting ready.
Oh, okay. All right. Number 5.1 here is communications. This is an opportunity for the district to address the board concerning any agenda topic. Is there anyone who is here tonight to wish to talk about anything on our agenda tonight? Yes, sir? Is it about the school improvement plans?
About what?
What's on our agenda tonight is school improvement plans.
No.
Okay. There's an opportunity at the end of the meeting also to talk to the board about any, concerning any topic. So that would be at the end of the meeting if it's something other than that.
I don't know anything about the first thing you asked, but I am here to want to share to the school boards some information.
And on what's?
I'm sorry?
On what topic?
Common Core.
Common Core's not on the agenda tonight, so...
It's still on the agenda. That's why I'm here.
All right. Well, I'm saying is that it's not on the agenda tonight, so that any comments about any topic not on the agenda has to wait till later on in the meeting. Okay?
No wait.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Our first item of business and our new business is our S.I.P. Rising Star plans. I don't know, I'm sure you guys have worked out whose...
Yeah.
Who's going to...
Did you open up the PowerPoint?
Is this the very last one?
Yeah.
It's all yours, Jill. Jill.
We're gonna go ahead and talk. I pasted in your vision graphs about student achievement because you had talked about that at last board meeting, so we kind of wanted to make sure that that was there. And below that is goals, if you just want to scroll down, Betsy. So just, those are just some reminders that we need to, as a team, we're gonna need to figure out how we can get those accomplished with the goals. I know you're gonna have further discussion on those. So we want to talk about Rising Star. And when you think of Rising Star, it's a new school improvement process. Where in the past, there've been lots of school improvement plans that have been, you know, have been written, and sometimes they've been looked at a couple of times during the school year, or sometimes they sit on a shelf. And with the Rising Star, the new state board has a system with the IIRC through NIU, Northern Illinois University, and we have Rising Star. So it's a continuous process. So you just, yeah, you just want to stay on that slide right there. So I'm gonna let the principals talk about their Rising Star teams and what they see. So this is your time to start talking and chime in as well.
Did you flip for who goes first?
No. But before they start, I mean, each, each one of us went through three days of training as administrators, and then they set up their, they chose their team members. And then we co-facilitated the first meeting, and I saw phenomenal things. And so, you know, the whole purpose of school improvement is to help make decisions, to inform, to solve problems as a team, to track progress, to evaluate, to look at our performance, to analyze, celebrate, and learn. And I think that they do that very much, so you need to talk about your successes if someone would like to use anything else.
I'll start. The new people start, and then everybody else gets to start later. Did you tell it to Tina?
That's great. I'll go say it.
We got this book. I lost it, but anyway, no. Rising Star, I think for all of our buildings, has been an amazing collaborative moment. Although I did not write school improvement goals last year, I did see what school improvement goals were, and Jill, of course, shared with us those every time she was our building principal. But as opposed to administration writing the goals, these goals are basically based on best practices that were created with these wise ways. And we assess these best practices, make the decision if our buildings meet these criteria. But we do this with a team as opposed to as individuals. And I think that has been extremely powerful in many components, going from all of the questions that you have as, as a principal, and one of them being, how do you involve your teachers in school improvement? This is exactly how you do it. Sharing school improvement goals that administration writes is very easy to say, to say once, and hopefully they still focus on it. But my building's a little bit different because I chose team leaders to be on the Rising Star. And the reason that I did that is because then it would be easier during our PLCs, which at GIS we're very fortunate to have, for our team leaders to share the progress that we have made and the goals that we have had. Now, that's not every building. That was just a choice that I made, and I run the risk of possibly overwhelming the team leaders. But the collaboration that we've had, the, the criteria that we have assessed already, the wise ways that we have assessed already, has, has run through our buildings so that they understand exactly what our focal points are. To me, it's so much more powerful than, you know, the six of us writing our building goals, us deciding that factor. This has created, the teacher leaders are empowered, and they are creating the plan, they're assessing the action plan, and then actually taking it out, carrying that action plan on, as well as carrying it on to the other teachers, too. So it's been very powerful. Conversations have been amazing. Wise ways. I love that. Where'd that come from? Is that a...
It's a meta-analysis, a conglomeration of research that's embedded in their Rising Star that they've been... It's really, it's really fun for us to watch them go through it, and Jill's done a great job of leading where they, they click on the research, they read the research as a team, and then they start talking about what best practices they're going to take on as a team.
Does that come out of ISPE?
It's NIU, IIRC.
IIRC.
ISPE has a hand up, too, but, yeah, all the research is right there about best practice, and it's very easy to read, and then they can start on, they start off on the right foot, then, having their conversations based around what the, not what we think we should do, but based around what the research says is best practice.
I think it really pushes us to dig deeper into what it is we're doing, where we want to be, and knowing that where we want to be for some of these educators or some of these items that we're assessing doesn't mean that we can be there in six months, doesn't mean that we can be there in a year. I think it really pushes us to, to look at not only where are we, but where we want to be, but how are we going to get there to ensure that we're taking the steps that we need, we're giving the teachers what they need in order to provide the best education for them.
Thus, the Rising Star.
And at the elementary level, I believe it's across the board, but I know our, our building, all, instead of having team leaders sitting in on the Rising Star team, we've asked some other teachers. So we have a teacher at each of our grade levels on there. And one of the neat things that I've seen with this, besides the conversations, is getting those people who you don't typically hear from involved in these conversations and empowering them to help drive some of these school improvement type goals has been a really neat shared leadership experience.
I agree with that. Our team leaders have been so involved with the Common Core, the NIMRC, and the ELA leadership teams, and just being team leaders. So it really was a kind of a stepping point to involve teachers that are enthusiastic about wanting to get out there in leadership positions. So it's really been rewarding to see them blossom. Can hardly wait for the next meeting. They almost need our coaches as they're reminded there's not some template telling us the speed of getting through this, because they want to go through it, you know, at a pace that we really understand it, we really digest it, and not just, the goal is not to get through it, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of a different thinking, you know, when we first, when I first came here, when we had the externals and internal reviews going on, lots of good information, but we felt like we had to hurry and get through all these reports and be done and presented, and then we were, we reached it, we were done. So that's what those, you know, the pace of this is reasonable. It's great to see the way they divided it up into the different elements. We're really focusing on leadership a lot right now, just looking at the leadership in our building, and then quickly going into the, what are the conditions for learning at our school, spending time looking at our assessment, figuring out in our meetings, what I really like is we have something called an open chair. If this was a Rising Star meeting, the team was here, there might be someone in the open chair invited, might be a literacy coach, it might be a special ed teacher, it might be, you know, one of the district office personnel's tuning on the topic and what element we're looking at. We invite someone to come to the open chair to help us understand something deeper. And what is so interesting to watch your team is they take on the responsibility and decide who's going to do, it's not just the principal doing it, it's the teacher saying, you know what, I want to learn more about, can we get some training on the map testing and a teacher volunteering? I will be the one to contact Tracy Kimble, I know she's good at that. And then quickly, they bridge to another school's Rising Star team, and next thing we know, we're having a professional development with those schools with this coach, which came from the request of teachers requesting for that professional development. So that's what's exciting to start seeing, it's not principals saying, this is the week, this is what we gotta do. It's teachers starting to see that and hear that.
I think it's really important to note that it's really created a climate of trust with the teachers collectively working together, because oftentimes at the middle school, you know, you think about your particular subject area, and you don't quite really know what's going on in the other subjects. And we had a lot of volunteers at the middle school. We have our department coordinators, as well as revolve in the chair, that includes a special education teacher. The interesting thing is, nobody wants that chair to revolve, they want to be there at all times, and the buy-in is there, and then they're going back, and they're sharing that with others. And so we're building up trust and the belief in it, and that's so important to have that ownership.
What was real interesting is that every building didn't know, they all knew that their, their meetings were scattered, throughout about a two-week, three-week period, and they all ended, when I talk about how I try to keep the islands on one continent, they all chose the same goal to start monitoring and work on. And that's about data and about more professional development and getting that PD in there immediately. So I was very pleased that they all, because it was like the fifth one that they had to assess, and everyone picked that one. Now, it looks a little bit different in each building, depending on the needs and the expertise, but I was very pleased. I didn't know if that would happen or not. It's all about that, that team. So these are three words that stick out about having purpose and a structure and collaboration, and I think the collaboration, I just can't, you know, it's just awesome to see if that's what we do. So the next slide, Betsy, just wanted to scroll down, is about the just continuous improvement cycle that we go through these steps over and over and over, assess, plan, implement, monitor, and adjust. And so, I mean, that's, that's what we do on a daily basis. The next topic that we did want to address is that you have, when I say GCM, I mean Gretchen Courtney, literacy reflection. The board, I know, invested a lot of money in Gretchen Courtney, and so we wanted to talk about what we learned during that process and how it's benefited our school district. So everybody can chime in as well, so we wanted to address that. But the first, the first word I would say is accountability. It created a culture where everyone in a building is responsible for reading and writing. And I don't know if you guys want to chime in?
It was a lot like, I think when we look at it, especially at the elementary level, where we, you know, before we brought in, in the literacy initiative, I think a lot of people were doing wonderful things in their classrooms, but they weren't really talking about what the wonderful things that they were doing. And I think that the literacy initiative definitely gave us that foundation, it brought us together to have conversations about what we were all doing for all kids. And I think that was a huge benefit, especially seeing where we're going now with Common Core and how large a part in that collaboration's coming next. But I think that it is so key for our teachers to be collaborating, and I think that this really gave us a good foothold to, to begin that, along with the foundation of talking about having common language and, and a vision and things like that.
Kind of like you said, the consistency, it gave that share, the understanding, you know, it was a platform, but we also knew we better go deeper now. And with our coaches and the guidance that they are giving, that's exactly where we're, here we are at with Common Core and studying that and unpacking that, that's, that's where we're at now, going deeper with everything. But without that foundation that this brought together, we weren't, especially, I can speak with three elementaries, which is really difficult to have one elementary building of 36 teachers having that consistency, not alone get both buildings, then the third. So that's really what helped hold those leaders from those buildings together, collaborate, let's get consistent, and then from here, really go further with the leaders that we have, our coaches, and thank goodness that we have our coaches.
So we still have, do we still have the same numbers of literacy coaches?
Now we don't. We have reduced coaches. We did not fill Tammy Herman's position, and, and then, and then we didn't, we didn't fill another position, it was left on, she became a principal. So we went, we went down two coaches. That is a concern of mine.
Yeah, and that's what's going to ask me to agree with you guys about what you think about that, since that affects them.
I think, I mean, I can't say enough about the coaches at the, I mean, speaking from elementary, they, I don't know how they do what they do, but...
They're so stretched. The piece that we had to pull back on is all the modeling, to be very honest, is all the modeling that they would be able to push into, especially your first two, three-year experienced teachers, they'd be able to push in a lot more modeling for those teachers.
Can you explain to Brandon what...
So writing down?
Because he's, can you kind of start like at a basic level so he understands, you know, the purpose of literacy coaches?
No acronyms.
No, he's not going to acronyms yet. Yet. Pushing is just counterintuitive to a dentist. Right.
Well, Liz and Tammy were actually in that role, so I'd have to put the two of you on the spot, but you could best tell, tell Brandon what you did.
Well, now, like, Kim was talking about the support, especially of teachers in their, their first few years here in the district. Oftentimes, a coach will, will go in and set up what we call a cycle with them. So it's like a gradual release of responsibility, showing them, modeling for them, so going in and teaching actual lessons so the teacher can sit back and observe and take notes and have that on-the-spot professional development. And then maybe they would do some, some co-teaching together, and they would get to the point then where the teacher was in full control for those lessons, and the coach was giving feedback to them. That's very, and that's where Kim was saying, that really has, we've had to really cut back on that because of all the work they're doing with Common Core, implementation of phonology at second and third grade now, we've gone from K1 to 2, 3. So that's, I think, where we're seeing, that our teachers receiving less from, the time isn't there.
And we, we initiated literacy coaches when we did Gretchen Courtney, we didn't have literacy coaches before, right?
We did.
We did. We have literacy coaches before, but they actually were doing double duty. They were doing literacy coaching of new teacher, of teachers, and they were also offering intervention to students. And it felt like that that was really difficult for them to do both roles.
Oh, and that's when you split them.
So then we split them and had coaches and interventions, so.
But we are down to, to literacy.
So how are we managing?
We have one coach over GIS and GM, and that's a five-year eight, and then two coaches, Joanne Close and Kathy Hertz, will cover the three buildings, the three elementary buildings. They're on the run all the time. There's a lot of planning after hours until 8:00 at night.
Well, the teachers, teachers talk about missing is, because when they're used to having your own coach in your building, you could go after hours on your, on your own and catch them and process concerns you have or ideas you have, good suggestions. I mean, your, any kind of employee in those shared schedules, that becomes more difficult to do. Rely on that email, rely on that next SIP day or the next training where they're doing their meetings.
But they really are, too, that, that first point person when a teacher has concerns of a student who isn't, isn't quite understanding or progressing as we hope they, they would be. So before they go to a problem-solving team to see what else we can put in place for a child to help them to succeed, they, teachers will seek out the coach and sit down with the data and what we're currently trying, and the coach will help the teacher then put in a plan for classroom interventions for that, that child also. So that's another path they're also wearing as well.
How did the coaches work with RTI recently?
And that's the part, that's the first part of it, very closely, that's the first part of it. And then also they sit on all of our problem-solving teams as well.
From, from an educational perspective, what is the most effective number of, of coaches?
One of the things that I hear when people talk about what our district needs is some people complain, we always take care of our special needs kids because we have, we offer a lot of gifted programs, honors programs for the other kids, and a lot of the times that I hear is, what about those regular kids? Do I, in my hearing, that these coaches are a great first-line resources for teachers, helping regular kids get...
Oh, because that's...
So by reducing the number of coaches, we're reducing what we have for a regular kid. Or not, I shouldn't say it's not regular, because they're...
More typically developing kids.
Yeah. Or, yeah.
Well, and one of our goals is differentiation, so we're gonna, we'll give to that question because there's a lot of differentiation going on.
And do the coaches help with differentiation at all levels?
We have differentiation teams in every college that have been trained.
They've been, they've been trained along with the training.
Absolutely.
If you look at it, at, at our instructional coaches as classroom teachers, now that we've cut them in half, basically, we have given them the time to provide the mini lesson, and then once they have offered their professional development, then we pull them away because they don't have the time to provide the differentiation or the guided reading table. So they don't have the time to actually guide the teacher beyond just that initial, initial professional development. And I know that right now, it's, it's an intense time with all of the new units that are being created and the Common Core being studied. It's also really a stretch to get those literacy coaches into the content classrooms. When we talk about those students that, you know, are, you know, middle level, that is another place that we can really stretch those students in those content areas as far as, you know, their reading or reaching some interests that they have, and those, those coaches are, they can go in and they can do a professional development, but that might be all that they, you know, have time for, or smattering of classes to get into. So we distract them.
How do you become a literacy coach? Like, what is the, what is behind training somebody to be able to train everyone else?
You have to have a master's degree in literacy, and it's spelled out in the code or in the certification requirements, that they have to have a reading specialist degree, so.
So it's not something, it's not in-house trained?
I mean, we do in-house training as well, but they...
Strong leadership skills, right? Very strong instructional.
Do we have any teachers with that in their development plans or that are working towards those qualifications?
And we typically have always hired them, because we find that internal candidates have what we need, and they have that training, and they understand how Ball Chan does things, and we don't find that typically from external candidates, so.
Well, they already have those relationships, so they're not down six months just trying to form a relationship.
Some, some teachers are close to that, are on the path of...
They're there, and you already got people that are being willing to step up and take that.
It seems like if an elementary teacher goes through a master's, it's very often in that.
Some other things that, I mean, we talked about collaboration and consistency, I don't, it did provide us a common language, step-by-step, we studied lexile, text complexity, which is all Common Core. It made us look at our, our resources in the classroom and say, what do we need to do to beef this up so we have more nonfiction, which, you know, when we really did our first analysis after the audit, it was not, I mean, we were very heavy on fiction. So we also developed critical reading classes, 5, 9, that we didn't have before we went through the literacy audit. And we talked, we talked a lot about formative assessments that I know you want to address.
Do we still have critical classes?
Yes, we do.
In reading and math?
Yeah. And just even grouping students in a classroom, I think our teachers got to be better at that, so. Anything else?
I think the big thing they've done in high school is the consistency of the common language. You know, we're so diverse in all the different elements and courses and work we have, but now you hear someone use the term lexile, and everybody knows what it means, or if you use a term, summarize. It's, if, if nothing else, the kids are understanding, if that type of terminology is used, they, they know what it means. And it, I can only see that benefiting them all through high school. And as it come up, you know, it's interesting to see these kids come up who started going through it before we started, and they knew the language coming in. And so it's, it's just that, that ability to understand what is being said in reference to reading properly, wherever they get it, they know it.
Is there anything that you would want to share with the board about, that we could change one thing, we could go back and do the audit again? I think the one thing that we've talked about is that we probably would have had phonology and comprehension, if at all possible. and comprehension, if at all possible, going at the same time versus just doing comprehension and then waiting on phonology, we would have done them at the same time.
Because I remember those discussions that we didn't necessarily have with educators, but I think there's something there to surprise us.
Do you see a difference in the progress the teachers are making between comprehension and phonology? Because they've been doing comprehension for a number of years and phonology has just been a few years.
Well, I don't know, your principals, you want to talk about your significant phonology?
Well, I know my data just screams, you can just tell kindergarten and first grade have phonology when you look at the tier-one students. They are eighty percent away. When you look at your data, you want at least eighty percent of your students to be in tier-one gives you that message that your curriculum is working, your curriculum is correct. And you know you're going to have, you know, ten to fifteen percent in the next tier needs some help. And then you hope only five to ten in the very top with interventions. But when you look at Chatham's data, you can just see this cut where phonology existed and where it did not. And, you know, even though it's scaffolding up, as a kid, a child goes from first grade to second grade, they're carrying that knowledge with them. But just looking forward, really studied that closely last year too, and kind of looked at some pre-test, post-testing to see what was going on with the reading. That's the new piece we've added and seeing the success that comes from it. So I'm going to definitely put that in there in the beginning.
And I think looking at the future, we are going to need to do some work with writing. You said we wanted to get reading under control, so writing is definitely got, has got to move forward.
Is it the right order? I mean, it sounds like we're stacking it, so you're, you're initial and then putting life on the, on the second level is really kind of on steroids, you know, because you didn't, you put your core, your basis. Maybe writing will, you know, there'd be a synergism going on with all this building?
Yes, absolutely. Beth, you want to go to the next slide? I think we're ready to talk about our local data. Pencils are just going to chime in on the strengths and areas of improvement. My building, everyone wants to start, but. Don't all jump in at once.
It's just like a board, ask for motion and nobody wants to, nobody wants to talk.
I think when we, when we look at our reading data, like one of elementary, we see that when we look at third and fourth grade, and we use MAP for the first time this year for third grade versus the DRA. And it's interesting to see our mean for both third and fourth grade when we look at our grade level mean as compared to the national. We're, we're scoring above where the national, the national average or the national mean is. But then, as Kim said too, when we look at our students who are still struggling and we have some work to do, I think, but I think that the data helps us determine what it is that we need because we're able to use the MAPs or break it out by strand also to show, is it vocabulary that we're struggling with our students or is it, is it comprehension? What area can we help the students, you know, where we need to do some work? And, and we're seeing similar results with MAP as well, that we're scoring above the national mean. But I think that's also an area of focus for us is that we, we have some interventions in place that we know are working in reading, but that's where we need to work on in MAP is interventions. And we've been working very closely with Tracy Kimball who has spread even more thin than.
She covers all six.
But I think teachers are starting to, to understand that more, especially through the collaboration and starting to talk about what we need to do for our students who are struggling in math at the elementary level. And those conversations are definitely starting to take place.
And this data leads us to our professional development. That's just key, looking at the data, which guides us to what we need to do with our professional development. Although not a ban of the cut scores, we knew, this cut score were changing when you look at the ISAT, the one thing that was interesting with the MAP testing, the third and fourth grade completed this year, and it was new for third grade to even take a test like that, an online version test. It lined up more accurately with those cut scores. So you knew you were getting some good information to help you just dig down deeper, to identify these children that need those interventions. And it doesn't necessarily need interventions all the way across in math or in reading, but the MAP testing really could help identify more specifically, we could drill down with it and really figure out what do we need to work on with individual children to just pull them up. So we're anxious, December will be here before we know it, that first week we'll be retesting children in third and fourth grade again, kind of just see where that baseline, that growth is taking place.
Well, and I'm so glad, because I know Julie, you're always impressed by what the MAP testing, which is another test Brandon that we subject our kids to. But how, but how much better a measure are kids probably are in ISAT scores. And so I'm really glad that, that not only we've done it for.
It's three through nine.
I didn't use it because I think James was like one of the first in when he was in.
One of the things that we've been able to look at is to look at the assessment and even though we, we're looking at the students that are about higher level or maybe your average student, we can look at the scores and say, hey, we are above where we need to be, but where are we weak at Glenwood? And so, for example, Tracy Kimball, again, we're throwing her name out here, who's amazing with the data. We can see that the higher level kids in math, actually weakness for them is data and statistics. So what did they do? The math teachers got together, they created a unit, Common Core, that's focusing on that. And so it's more than just seeing if we're meeting or exceeding, we're seeing specifically what our students of all Chatham need. It's also obviously helped us to determine what students need to be involved in, the critical math classes or the critical reading. And we know, again, like Mrs. Coon pointed out, whether it's vocabulary or fluency that we need to focus on. But the, the data is really exciting and the great thing is, we are training the teachers. They're, in fact, Tracy Kimball is going to work with the social studies and science teachers this week to help them interpret the data, to see what they need to do within their subject areas to help students be more successful. So it's really an exciting time. It can sound kind of boring looking at numbers, but it really gives us a lot of excellent feedback.
Well, I'd say that's, that's what excites me about, when you talk about areas of improvement, you know, we can look at all the data and identify a particular area, that's what all this data is giving us. But what we need to get better at the high school is using the data. That's our area of need. And that's why it's been, I know you definitely already talked about it, right, I'm starting working here, but, you know, that, that's the direction we're going. Who knows what more I could tell you or say to you or point out to you about the specific areas we need help in? In my mind, it's, it's using the data's area we got to improve in because there's a, there's a front of it. And at least you mentioned, we're testing our kids all the time, that means we have data all the time. And taking that data and running with it and using it is what's going to make a difference. But we have to, we have to train our teachers how to do that, what to look for, and get them excited about it first. Show them what it can do and what it means, then they might get more excited about using it versus showing them how to use it first.
And getting them to want it. I mean, when you go back to ISAT, waiting, you know, the next year to get it eventually and then get time to look at it, that used to be kind of what we would live for. And our own local assessment, our own data, like MAP, which is online and you get the results instantly so that you can do something with it. How many of the buildings said that, that that was one of their goals identified?
All of them.
I thought so. See, use the data.
And, you know, I think what's really a great thing, and we're all on that one continent and, and every team talked about it. And I, I got to have the pleasure of watching all six teams. When they, when they tried to roll out how we're going to do professional development, it's really what you had said, Mr. Peter Meyer, about how we need to layer. We're, we're layering it. We're not saying, okay, this is just, we're going to give you all this data and this is what you do with it. It's really, this is the step one, you know, we're just going to look at classroom reports and, and what this tells us. And so we've got, it's two, it's going to be actually three, at least three professional development sessions with teachers on how to use the data. And then there, we figured out that we're going to need to reboot it too, that once we, we complete more testing in December, in January, we're going to have to come back and revisit, you know, now, now you need to look at your classroom reports. So it's systemic, it's, it's, we're a system. It's not just a one, you know, the ISAT is just a one-time test score and you move on. So it's really awesome to see. I, you know, we would actually like to sometime tape a couple of, you know, two or three minutes of each Rising Star team and show you, so we'll eventually have that. Because I just can't, I wish we could, you know, model what happens during those meetings, but, I mean, really the principle, I mean, it's a shared leadership. I mean, you said it best, Joe, so.
I'm just going to point out one strength, and I'm just going to be tying into something Jill talked about. One of the consistencies or one of the improvements we got out of the, our literacy audit was the usage of non-narrative text. And we were probably, I can't remember what the audit said, but we were probably at a thirty percent non-narrative, seventy percent narrative, which means we read stories and we really did, really enjoyed doing it and our, and our students were good at it. In the past three years at GIS, we have been on the verge of sixty percent non-narrative, closer sometimes to seventy percent non-narrative, including the content areas. And this year, our MAP data proved that our summarizing of non-narrative matched our narrative. Now, if we think about what Common Core asks them to do, they need to be college and career, but also lifelong learners ready, we know what we have to read to succeed in, in the world and it's non-narrative. I mean, we love our stories, but our students are now reaching the goals that we set and we can see that completely disaggregated through these MAP tests. So that's, that's a strength.
People stick together all this data.
Well, everybody contributes. A literacy coach, numeracy, I mean, Tracy creates numeracy matrices for.
She doesn't sleep.
No, right. Coaches and principals play a large part in the literacy.
To give a shout out to a guy who's got a tough job, it's Chad Kent, right now is creating a database to house all of the elementary reading assessment data. It's going to really help us because in the past, it's been kind of a little here, a little here, and you get turned over in a couple of positions and trying to figure out who your go-to is. And now Chad putting this together, it should be more user-friendly for everybody to be able to use the.
For the elementary's data to come to the, to GIS as opposed to us sifting through them, it'll all be together, so.
Or if you have a student transfer from one elementary school to another elementary school, instant access.
It's all right there. Which would be rather.
Any other things you want to add about strengths or needs for improvement?
Well, I, one last comment, I made it last time, for those of you who weren't here, we're changing this from, I'm changing it from, in my mind, from school improvement to student improvement. And just to hear all of you being able to, you know, identify and target what needs to be done for lifelong success is just great.
And for Brandon's sake, again, sorry.
Okay. I'm the remedial kid right now.
When, when I first, well, before I was on the board, I was, I was getting parents on Jill's team at GMS, we did the old-fashioned amounts of pieces, remember those? Gosh, they were awful. Like one of my first school improvement plan meetings, remember when it was, we started school by school by school and we were ended up, we didn't realize what we were doing, but we were hitting schools against each other. And after that meeting, I'm like, what are we doing? And we asked to totally change. It was horrible. What we did to this principal was horrible. And we asked, because we didn't, you know, we were stupid, I was stupid clearly, but, you know, so we've gone to this, everybody pitches in and it's just, it, and it was just one little thing, but I just appreciate the way that, except Carrie has to leave her room, because not only did you totally pitch on these reports, but you coordinated all your clothing, so.
And I'm really glad to see Chad Kent doing a lot of that, the technology part, which I can, you know, he's got an overwhelming job with keeping the, everything running and doing the, putting together, together all the data and the information and making it usable.
Yeah. But and just seeing all of the schools working together, you know, because I don't, I don't know, but, you know, elementary is first, but it is from parent, it's a lot of rivalry between these two areas. And I mean, it was just, I mean, this is just so nice to see how we keep growing, not only as students and parents and community and our staff together, working together. It's just, I mean.
Well, if you look at the mobility rate, you know, it's pretty high. And I would suspect that some of it is between schools.
It is.
It is, yeah.
It's a lot between schools. It was amazing what happened between.
Just moving around the same location.
Yeah.
We put it out on the website at the end of May, they'll keep it on the website, that
if you're moving to contact me. And the number of transfers and, you know, Kim, Joe and Tammy did a phenomenal job of trying to keep track of that without their secretaries until their secretaries came back. But it, I mean, it was three or four emails a day sometimes with this person, this person, this person have transferred from building to building. And it was, it was just amazing, so. They, they do do that, so. But there really needs to be somebody that centrally try to organize that, so.
I was going to ask Chad.
If you want to go down, we talked about how our kids do very well on the NWE reading and math, and you can see that our kids do very well and go above the national norm. So, and I can get into the minigitty of RIT if you want to know what RIT stands for or, but I would, I will look at it as an equal intervals scale and think of a ruler when you think of measurement. And so every grade level.
What's NWE?
The math test. Northwest, yeah. Now, even in our training last year, when there were thirty of us that went through some of the data training, as kids get older, the progress slows down, the growth slows down. So our kids are very typical of that. So you do, you do see that. So that's reading, and this is math. So are there questions on that? The great thing about the math test is it measures the growth over time and we can have targets and, and we can really drill down on the information. So we've still got a lot more to learn about what the data tells us and we're going to be working on that. But as I said, this is, this is not just a one-year goal, this is, we're going to do this for three years.